All right, good evening. It's now 6:00 PM in the regular session of the Planning Commission. The City of Lancaster come to order. Mayor, the roll call please. Excuse me, I'm not following my agenda. I beg your pardon. We'll have the invocation first by Bishop Don Sather and then the pledge will be led by Commissioner Smith.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have of gathering together this evening. We're grateful for the land that we live in, that we're able to exercise our rights and our freedoms. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have of living in this city. We ask you tonight that you'll bless the commission as they consider the matters that are put before them, that they may have Thy Spirit to be with them as they do. Bless those who come forward as they present their positions, that they may be able to be articulate and convey their positions well. We ask you that you'll bless all this evening as they return home, and they may do so in safety and find all well there. And we ask for these favors and blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, united in the midst of all the evil and injustice.
Thank you. Now we'll have the roll call.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Molly.
Present.
Sandy Smith.
Here.
Fabian Tarantino, absent. Vice Chairman Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is offered at this time to provide input to the commission regarding any agenda item. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludeke?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. So therefore, any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary in identifying the agenda item that you'd like to speak on. Each person then will be given an opportunity to address the commission when the item is called. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. The first item on our agenda is a consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17, 2012. And then we've received these minutes electronically, and the hard copy was provided to us tonight. And four modifications were noted. So the approval would, if a motion is offered, including the modifications.
I move that we approve the minutes of the September 17, 2012 meeting.
Second that.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. So the only item on our agenda, the other item on our agenda tonight is a continued public hearing on the residential zone update. The City of Lancaster is the applicant, and this is an item that we've had before us a number of times. And our staff report includes some modifications which were provided to us at our briefing last week. So without objection, the public hearing is open. And do we have a speaker on this?
I do have one speaker's card, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then could...
Ron Gayadine.
All right. Let's hear a staff report briefly first, and then we'll hear you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Commissioners. This is the continuation of the public hearing for the comprehensive update of the residential zoning ordinance. This is Title 17, Chapter 8 of the Lancaster Municipal Code. We spent the last several months talking about this. Just to backtrack a little bit, as far as timeline, way back last year, 2011, the city released an administrative draft for staff for internal department review. In January of 2012, we had a public draft that was released for review by members of the public. And so we've been, most of our discussions have been off this January public draft. But the last, this particular staff report includes a redlined edit of that draft. That would be Exhibit B of the staff report. And Exhibit A is just a cleaned-up version of Exhibit B without all the redlined edits. So the edits, the difference between Exhibit A and the public draft, it includes revisions that reflects all the comments that we've received, either in writing or at this hearing. And we've tried to consider all the viewpoints that have been submitted and either provide a response or, and/or corrections to the draft. So the commission is welcome to discuss any further issue that they choose, and staff will try their best to provide a response. Thank you.
All right, very good. Anybody have any questions or comments, or shall we hear from the speaker first? Let's hear from the speaker then. And I'm sorry, would you say the name again, please?
It's Ron Gayadine.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you for hearing me. My total goal here is to basically support this change. I recently purchased a piece of property, 42046 Desert Sage Avenue. That's basically Desert Rose area. I know you guys are probably familiar with that. And the reason I'm here is, one of the reasons I purchased that piece of property is I have two parents that are in their 80s. My goal is to put a second guest house, if you will, in the back of that property. And I'm certain, you've heard this before, many of us at my age group are taking care of parents, and one of the things we're trying to do is basically give them an elbow room so they can have their own space. The big thing that I'm concerned with is the water meter. I understand the water meter has a large cost with it. I understand with this new change, there would be no additional water meter required. I would like to see that go away, to be very honest with you. And I just purchased the piece of property in September, so after I talked to staff here and they told me what was going on, I was recommended to attend tonight and at least give my support to what's going on here. And I'm hoping you guys will look at this favorably and approve it. And that's all I'm here for.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, then. Any other speakers?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. We'll leave the public hearing open because there may be some comments and suggestions from the commission and so. And by the way, thank you, Chen and Brian and everyone else that's been involved with this. This has been a Herculean effort, I would say, certainly. And once we're over this hump, then we'll have the opportunity to address commercial and industrial sometime into the future. What's that? So does anyone care to offer anything tonight?
Well, I had some, I wanted to also thank Chen for making the corrections, making the matrix and stuff. When we send this off to City Council, assuming we send it off before we make more corrections, I was talking with Chen, is there any way that, besides the matrix that we have, any discussions that we have on the corrections so that the City Council would know that we had deliberated over certain points? It might make it another Herculean effort to do it, or it might be something as simple as pulling key words out of minutes and stuff. Think that would be possible. I was just looking to save them time in City Council.
Well, in the past, when we've had consideration of modifications of this magnitude, often we've just gone through them point by point, and if there is consensus, then the changes would be made. If there is a divergence of opinion, we might have to take a vote on it. But certainly worth discussion, so if there's anything you want to bring forward, let's talk about it. I've got a couple of things that I noticed that in this last reading that I picked up and that I'd like to discuss as well. So if you've got some issues, let's talk about them.
Well, my number-one issue would be the solar requirement that we have. There's a variety of reasons why I would be opposed to it.
Which section is that in?
If you look in Exhibit A, it would be Page 9. Well, Page 9 includes the development standards, and it references the solar provision, but there's a specific section that talks about the solar provision, which is called out in 17.08.305.
Is it? Yeah, on the matrix on Page 9, the bottom.
The reason why I would be against mandating that we'd have solar requirement in our residential zoning requirements is, these are due to take first on September 1, 2014, and we have some entitled projects that are already in the pipeline to be done. And would they be subject to the solar requirement? Would there be a de facto? Would they have to then go back for reapproval?
The way that we would normally apply this is that if they pull a building permit after the date of January 1 of 2014, they would be subject to the requirement.
So everything that's entitled now would be not subject to it, even if it hasn't been built?
No, it would depend on when they actually pulled the building permit for the structure itself.
Okay.
So is that any different than any other regulation that we would adopt? We would either adopt or recommend to the City Council and ultimately be adopted as a change to an ordinance?
No, the only difference here is that for any of the other standards that are in this that may be a change, they would actually go into effect at the time the ordinance goes into effect. The solar provision, we deliberately pushed about a year out because some of the feedback that we got from the Building Industry Association was they, number one, they wanted some time to kind of be ready for this. There are a few builders already doing this, but some that haven't started. And we also tried to look at some language that gave a little more flexibility, perhaps participation in off-site locations, if the state ultimately permits that. You know, there may be other provisions that would give a little more flexibility also. But essentially, whether the lot was created or not created, it's really dependent on the time that the building permit for the individual unit is pulled.
You brought up whether some of the builders have already put them in and put in solar and some haven't. And those are usually driven by market forces, given the buyer more bang for their buck. I have to worry that it'll also make housing more expensive for lower income, and I would like to see it stay as a market-driven force where the people that want it then could buy into it later. And also, too, the state's looking into this, too. Would we be preempting the state's requirement for solar that may be coming down the pipeline? Because normally it doesn't go state first and then we follow along and write the requirements after them.
Well, I guess in response, number one, the reasons that you stated, I can certainly appreciate those. You know, those sound like your reasons for why you would be concerned about it. As far as any type of mandate that the state itself creates and how it would relate to this provision, it's a little hard at this time to say, because sometimes the state will put standards in place and say, you know, you have to follow these if you don't adopt your own. Other times, they will do, as you said, in certain circumstances and say, we don't really care what else a local jurisdiction has done. We, the state, have decided this is the way it's going to be. So it really would depend on how they crafted their language, and, you know, it's kind of hard to speculate at this point what they would do with that.
Most of these systems are leased, aren't they, when they're put on the roof? Or would they be considered owned by the homeowner?
I think, oh, as far as the ones that were done here, I think most of these would probably end up being an ownership situation for that. They would tie essentially to that unit. However, as you've correctly pointed out, where you have existing houses already in place that don't have solar, sometimes homeowners do enter into lease arrangements for those. But for these, I would expect, you know, they're going to attach to the property and they're part of that package as far as the construction.
How would the lease work, though, if somebody had to be foreclosed on? Who would own that lease? Because normally, don't the second creditors not get their stuff back? Is that part of the risk they take on leasing?
On existing housing?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, honestly, I don't know. It really depends on how that is structured individually.
This proposed 1708.305, the encumbrance of this requirement imposed on a new home development is likened to some of the other changes relative to some of the other design features. I mean, these are many changes to what we've previously been doing in this community. Just, I'm curious. Subparagraph D of that section talks about site fulfillment of the solar energy generation. It isn't, I mean, it's a statement that isn't, you know, I'm just curious, how would that work? For instance, if developer A chose to build 40 units and chose not to install whatever the requirement is, 1 kilowatt per, no, excuse me, half a kilowatt per dwelling unit, or 3/4 of a kilowatt, depending on if it's an RPD or not, up to one. They chose not to provide 40 kilowatts of solar generating facilities on their new homes, and they chose to enter into agreement with a recent applicant before this commission. That is what you're envisioning?
Yes. We actually, at the time we drafted this language, there was legislation at the state level at that time that would permit these kind of off-site agreements. And it was designed to really handle situations where the orientation of the house may not be the optimum for solar, or their shading in an individual situation, so that those residents didn't have, you know, weren't frozen out. But the legislature did not adopt that legislation. Once again, we tried to write sort of a broad statement that would allow some flexibility to individual builders, because we can't necessarily foresee everything that's coming. But clearly, we wanted the option there to allow an off-site approach if it's legally possible to do that at some point.
So your concern is really the relative cost of the unit as defined in the marketplace. So following that same approach, we're conditioning, proposing to condition development that nearly all of the dwellings' garages would be behind the front plane of the structure, which is totally different than the majority of the residential structures that have been built in this community for the last ever how long it's been. There's certainly costs associated with that, far more than the installation of a solar, I would think. But that's a design criteria, right?
Yes.
So, but that's, but again, that's market-driven. There's going to be, I think, an increased cost potentially to impose some of the other conditions, not just the solar. Would you all disagree with that?
No, I agree.
Yeah? So...
Behind the plane was in line with the design guidelines, Ed.
No, no, I agree. I agree that that's an appropriate thing, an appropriate condition to place because of the design guidelines. And aesthetically, I think it'll make for, you know, a better appearance of residential tracks and, you know, be more attractive for folks to acquire the properties. I, you know, I think it's a positive thing.
It'll be many more yards of concrete for driveways.
Well, yeah, again, you know, five feet closer to the curb line is, you know, three more yards of concrete, what used to be $70, I don't know what the heck it is now. What's a yard of concrete now?
300, yeah.
350? You know, all that adds up to the cost of a unit. I mean, just, so the closer I can cram it to the street, and by the way, not put in a backyard, you know, you recall what's happened with those conditions that have been, that we've suggested and recommended, and the ordinances that are on the books in the city have been waived because others made a decision that market conditions were such that we should be a little more lenient.
Well, we did have a requirement for backyards to be landscaped, but we waived that. Is that what will happen with the solar requirement, too? I mean...
Again, that's a decision, that's not our decision to make. The City Council's made that decision and have extended that, I think, recently, didn't However, the condition of landscaping front yard and rear yard is still a requirement of the ordinance.
Yes, it's still in there.
And it's still in this design requirement and these proposed changes as well.
Yes.
That hasn't changed, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I think it's a simple decision. Either we, either we want to impose a requirement to have solar or alternate, alternative energy generating on all new development, or we don't. You don't want to do it, right?
I don't want to do it right now.
Okay.
I'd kind of like to wait for the state's guidance on it and see what happens. There's a lot of credits that are involved with solar that are politically driven and may or may not happen. Change of political climate could have a great effect on how that is. It would be nice to have it in writing so we could impose it later on, but I still think that there's an opportunity for this to be added on later. It doesn't have to be adopted at this time.
Anyone else agree that we should, I guess, pull that section out? I guess that would, remove that entire section and any reference to it. That would satisfy you?
That would, yes.
Okay. Anybody else agree with that? I'm not getting any of this, I'm getting a lot of that.
So I can't move to take it out and it could die for a lap in a second?
You can move anything you want. I don't know if you get a second.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we remove the solar requirement in the section 1708.305 and other references to it.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll ask again. Afraid not. All right.
Sean.
All right. Anything else? Did you have anything else?
No, I pretty much made all my corrections on the way through and satisfied with the majority of it.
Okay. I've got a question on 1708.290, which is on page 63. I don't know where it is in the red line, but, or blue line, or whichever line, color you want. It's on page 63 of the proposed ordinance, I guess. Under D, Design Requirement 6, since we recently heard some solar farm matters before the commission, I'm just troubled with the language. And correct me if I'm off-base here. "The solar farm shall be designed and constructed in a manner that mitigates all environmental impacts, including aesthetics, noise, dust, yada, yada, yada." There could be conditions or situations where an environmental review pointed out some conditions that could not be mitigated, and overriding conditions would have to be imposed, potentially. And the commission or council could do that. So by imposing, by this language, does that preclude that opportunity?
Actually, I think you may have, I think there's an inconsistency, because the design requirements under that refer to that. But if you go to the findings section...
Yeah.
That says that the finding is either that it will not result in a significant effect or the effects are acceptable due to overriding considerations. So I think what, you know, I think there's an inconsistency in the language.
Well, it's inconsistent. I mean, the governmental entity has the opportunity, or has the opportunity, if they choose, to make a finding and overriding considerations, right? I mean, they have that.
Yes.
They have that right.
Yes.
So if we impose this language that the design shall, that doesn't give them, give us or they the opportunity to make that finding. So I don't know, I don't know if it's a major point, but somebody might want to hang their hat on it.
Yeah, I'm wondering whether Item 6 should come out, because it is covered essentially in the findings section.
I don't know if it's anywhere else in here. I just picked it up in my last reading through the thing and since we recently heard from a lot of folks regarding solar farms. You want to think about it? I mean, do we want to leave it in the way it is, or do you want to?
No, I don't, I don't think it should. First of all, I think, I think the intent of it is covered by the finding. And I think you've got a potential conflict here. The other five items really refer to the physical layout of the sites, and they are the typical things that we've been required to do or required people to do.
Right.
But Number 6 really kind of intrudes on the environmental decision-making process, which is a part of the, of the findings development, if you will. I think it's probably covered adequately by the findings language without it having to be there.
Chairman Vos, would you want to motion to strike it?
I think if we get to the point of... I think if we get to the point of approving this tonight, if we get to that point, then we could include in the motion to eliminate that 1708-290D Paragraph 6, or C, I should say, Paragraph 6.
Yeah, I think I would recommend that.
Okay. Do we need to, anywhere else we need to look?
I don't think we call out, do we call out anything else of that type through a CUP process? I don't, I don't think we use that language anywhere else.
I don't know.
Yeah, because we picked it up, we picked it up when we, when we modified Paragraph 6 under D, but it is, that, yeah, Paragraph 6 under D conflicts with Paragraph 6 under C. Okay. Under 1708 dot 070, Paragraph C, 4, in the, in, one of my comments, I raised the issue regarding eaves, overhangs, gables, those things. And I thought I said my preference would be to have a larger or longer overhang or gable or eve, as opposed to no gable or eve. The way it was picked up in the comments was just the opposite of that, that my position was that they offer little aesthetic benefit. I think they offer, depending on the design, they do offer an aesthetic benefit. So, I just, just make that point. I mean, obviously, the design of the structure, the aesthetics, the way it's, the way it's proposed, it's considered in whole, not just necessarily on an eve or a window or a door or whatever the future may be, right? Okay. I mean, it's, I just want to make the point, that's all. Okay? Anybody have anything else?
What was the number on that, 1708?
08 dot 070 dot C4, C like Charlie 4. It, it really doesn't need to be changed, I think it just, the way it's been rewritten is that, whether it's eaves or not, it just, it just, the way the, the way the project is proposed architecturally is considered in whole, not just necessarily the ease of the structure, right? I mean, that's the intent, if I understand it correctly, right?
Yes.
Anyone else have anything they want to add? Change? Throw out? Okay. We have, we have no other, any other comments from staff? Public? All right. So then, we'll close the public hearing without objection. It would be appropriate to consider a motion on the adoption as recommended, including ending 17 dot 08 dot 290, C like Charlie 6, to remove that. So, do we have a motion?
Was that just addressing 1708-290, the removal of Paragraph C number 6? Is that that first motion?
Yeah, C6, yeah. That would be, that would be appropriate to include that in the motion.
I move that, the removal of 17 dot 08 dot 290, Paragraph C number 6.
Okay. No, just do it separately. All right. Any further discussion? All right, please vote on that. All right, one more. Ms. Harvey.
Question.
All right, we'll vote again. All right, six yeses to remove that section. All right. So, now we have the consideration recommended, recommendation of staff for this item. Pardon?
What did you just say? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we had, it would be appropriate to consider a motion on the recommendation of staff on this item.
I move to receive public testimony in the residential zoning ordinance and adopt resolution number 12 dash 13, recommending to the City Council approval of a comprehensive update to the city's residential zoning ordinance in Title 17, Chapter 8 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, Exhibit A.
I second.
Thank you, thank you. All right, further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, thank you. All right, Director's announcements.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, we have, as a staff, no items that are pending for your action in November. So as a commission, you may wish to consider, there's a couple things you need to think about, I think this is the first one. The regular planning commission meeting in November, unless you have a need to meet or some issue that you want to discuss, from staff's perspective, you can probably cancel it if you would like.
That's on November 19th.
That's on November 19th. The other thing that, that we are trying to do is to set a second joint special meeting with the ADC. As of right now, we're looking at trying to do that on October 30th because of the schedule of the project, the sooner the better. We've gotten some feedback, but not yet a quorum for either group. But if, as a group, you're willing to look at that as a meeting date, it would be appropriate to adjourn this meeting at that time to the October 30th date.
Can I clarify something? So if we were to move forward to cancel the 19th, that would also take the special meeting of the 12th off the calendar?
Yeah, it would take the 12th off.
Yes, yes.
So, you circulated the request to the members of this body as well as ADC for the October 30th meeting, but you need a quorum. However, you know, that's some days away.
Yes.
So if we adjourn to that date and there is not a quorum, then the meeting won't be held.
Correct.
So, it would be like adjourning to the November 19th and then not having a quorum show up, same sort of problem?
Same, same situation, yes.
So to make it simple, it might, might be simpler and smoother if we adjourn to the 30th of October, as suggested, and see if a quorum shows up.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
And then, what we've done administratively in the past is just agendized a cancellation of the November meeting, unless somebody objects and wants to, and wants to have something going on on the 19th of November. Anybody have any, any burning desires to have a regular meeting on the 19th?
Yeah, we could do my birthday party.
Could your birthday party join for Diana and I, but probably not.
I have firing...
It's high on your list.
They want to have a birthday party and we're going to throw cold water in, I guess.
We'd have to notice it clearly.
Never mind.
Go ahead, you were going to say something, I'm sorry.
I have a prior engagement on the 30th and won't be able to attend.
Okay.
Ryan, how many responses have you received for the 30th? I believe I sent mine...
Three, three for the planning commission and one at two...
Two commission and one ADC.
Two planning commission, one ADC.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd recommend we adjourn to the October 30th combined meeting and see where it takes us. And I think, I think you have the sense that the commission has no need to meet on the 19th of November.
No, so we would resume normal schedule in December then, with the special meeting on December the 10th, regular meeting on December 17th.
So, so if you do get a quorum on Thursday, October 30th, and we have that meeting and we would adjourn to December 10th then?
Correct.
Okay. All right then. Public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This is a time, anyone in the audience can speak to us on non-agendized items, and you have three minutes if you care to use them. Anyone? Nope? All right, thank you. So, we stand adjourned till...
I have a comment about speed humps.
Go ahead.
I've had two people talk to me about the speed humps on 27th West between J8 and K, and one was just like, okay, it says 25 miles an hour, and then right behind it, it says 15 miles an hour speed humps. And I figured that you could drive 25, but you would really test your suspension. I drove over them and I think they're designed very well, they do a good job. One of the residents there, I was walking my dog by, I asked him, I said, well, what do you think of them? He says, overall, I really like what they've done to the street, but I just don't like to have to drive slow myself.
You were surprised at that too, I'm sure, huh?
It made me smile. And wanted to thank Joy for the extraordinary effort on the minutes for her last meeting.
It was that, that's for sure. Yeah, I noticed the L14 between 60th and 65th, this speed bumps. However, I didn't notice any signage, but that was Saturday afternoon, evening, so maybe they hadn't gotten around to put the signs up yet. I think they were still working.
Yes, that could be, they're, they're still installing all of the speed humps, I mean, several of them still, and signs, they'll go up at some point.
So, so where they're being put in the city are these long, half-mile street sections without any curves or stop signs or whatever, just to try to slow people down?
Yes, they're going in to control speeds. They were, all of the locations that, where speed humps are going in were all initiated by the neighbor, neighborhoods themselves. So somebody came in and said, you know, we have a speeding problem on our street, what can we do? We would go out and do a study first to see if there is indeed a speeding issue. Our criteria is basically if the 85th percentile speeds are 35 miles per hour or greater on that section. And then, it, once we confirm that their, their street disqualify for traffic calming, then the neighborhood would also initiate a petition process. And the petitions require a supermajority of the people that live on the street in front of the street that would have the speed humps. And the, we would basically, there would be a neighborhood champion who would go out and get the petition signed, so we want it very much to be initiated and, you know, wanted by the neighborhood. So, that was the process before they went in. And it was all, they were all funded by a grant through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, and they're under construction now and will shortly be done.
You said the criteria was 80% of traffic had to be observed over 35?
The 85th percentile, so 85%, sorry, trying to think exactly how that goes. It's the speed at which 85% of the people are going at or under.
I just noticed the traffic used to fly up that street, now it's quite a bit more calm. So, thank you.
Excellent program. And, and the, the grant, did the grant define the supermajority and all the rest of it, or is that something that you folks decided to?
No, the grant did not have those requirements, that was, it's in our traffic calming policy.
That's neat. Yeah, it's interesting, but it's the, the street sections that the community fronts, as opposed to some other reason to institute it then. So it's really a community-driven effect, then, isn't it? Yeah, super. All right, well, good, thank you. Anything else from anyone? All right. So, this meeting then stands adjourned till, let's see, stands adjourned to the Southwest Transit Village Planning Area Vision Plan Special Joint Meeting of the Planning Commission and the Architectural and Design Commission on Tuesday, October 30th, 2012, at 5:00 p.m. in the Emergency Operations Center here at Lancaster City Hall. Thank you.